Alright, everybody, it is six o'clock. And I would like to invite everybody to the August 16th meeting of the Eureka City Council. And we will start today with a roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Burgel?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
And Mayor Seaman?
Here.
And Councilmember Bauer is absent.
Thank you very much. And now, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Do we have a report out from closed session?
No report out tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, we are going to move on to Mayor's announcements, and today is going to be a maritime-focused Mayor's Report. Because first, what I would like to do is acknowledge the swift resolve of Leroy Zerling, champion of all things harbor, North Coast fabricators in Kernon Construction, as well as Councilmembers Arroyo and Burgel, who jumped into action to offer the city a third and palatable option for moving our dolos. So, nobody was happy after the last meeting, especially Mr. Zerling, but I think everybody is pretty dang contented right now. And I sat on Matticat Plaza yesterday for two hours, just watching these giant cranes move a forty-ton piece of concrete with exacting precision. And if you know me, you know that there's a few things I like more than watching people do their job well. And it was so satisfying to watch them do that work. And so, congratulations to them. They were fabulous, and it was a real pleasure to watch. And I also would like to, say that we are in the middle of Coast Guard Month, which we'll be talking about in a little bit. And it's a celebration of our Coast Guards, or Coasties and their families. But I recently found out that tomorrow is the birthday of Jeannie Cancelier. And Jeannie Cancelier, I believe we have a picture of her. She was called the Coast Guard Mom, according to Mr. Zerling. And she used to take care of all the Coast Guard families, was a founder in Coast Guard days, and just a real advocate. I guess she had tons of parties and dinners and, her walls are adorned with the letters of people that she's met who have come through here for the Coast Guard. So, I thought it was really especially appropriate that it's her birthday this week that we also get to celebrate. Guess we get to celebrate you guys, and we, and, have a proclamation for US Coast Guard Month, and the city's twenty-second anniversary as a Coast Guard city. We were really hoping to do this on the twentieth anniversary, but COVID had different ideas. So, we're so happy to be back in action to be playing baseball, which you guys have already had a chance to do. You're coming up to get to go visit the zoo, where you'll get to experience the skywalk if you haven't yet. There's gonna be an ice cream social there. You have passes to go play golf, and really just enjoy yourselves. Coast Guard Days is really about you guys enjoying yourselves. And of course, there's Cook Your Own Steak Night on Thursday, which I understand everybody's very excited about. So, I am gonna read this proclamation, and then I will invite you to say a few words, and we'll get a picture. So, "The City of Eureka Proclamation: United States Coast Guard Month and the City of Eureka's Twenty-Second Anniversary as a Coast Guard City, August 2022." Whereas the Coast Guard is one of America's armed forces and traces its foundings to August 4th, 1790, when Congress authorized construction of tin vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect the collection of federal revenue. And whereas, the Coast Guard is a maritime military multi-mission service, unique among the US military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters. And whereas, twenty-nine cities have taken strides to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard men and women assigned to their cities, the Coast Guard has returned, has in turn recognized these cities as official Coast Guard cities, as a way to show their appreciation for the city's efforts to extend so many considerations to the Coast Guard families and their dependents. And whereas Humboldt County, along with Mendocino and Del Norte Counties, are served by the proud Coast Guard service members of Sector Humboldt Bay and Sector San Francisco, many of whom live in the greater Eureka area, enroll their city, their children in Eureka City Schools and are an integral part of our wonderful community. And whereas, on June 3rd, 2000, the City of Eureka was designated as the second official Coast Guard city, and was re-designated in 2011 and 2019, and has taken great pride in the contributions of the Coast Guard community, the City of Eureka is proud and grateful to celebrate twenty-two years as a Coast Guard city. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2022 is US Coast Guard Month, and recognize the Coast Guard's many contributions to the well-being and vibrant seat of our community. I would like to note, this proclamation doesn't say anything about life-saving, which is what you guys have really just, that is where you shine in these rough and dangerous waters here. And I would like to invite Captain Haigalup to introduce his crew and to share a few words.
Am I talking to the microphone?
Yes, please.
Do I get the timer too? Is that a part of the deal?
You should.
Yeah, I'm not that articulate that I need the timer, so. Mayor, thank you very much. City Council members, other city staff members, you know, thank you for having us. I didn't create any formal presentation or speech tonight, but it's, it's an honor to be here. I bring with me Mike Dara, who is my deputy at the sector, and then Senior Chief Zarelik has joined us. He has recently moved into town as our command and list advisor. It's just been a great asset. So, it's, it's an honor to have both of these individuals with me here today. And, you know, we represent about two-hundred-and-twenty-five individuals that are wearing the suits, you know, up and down the coast, all the way from the Mendocino County line up to the Oregon-California border. And, you know, they have their families that obviously support them too. So, we, we have a pretty big group of individuals that are here, all focused on, you know, on our job and just being in the area. And it is, in your proclamation, it is fantastic. One of the things that I think is unique about Coasties is we really do try to integrate into communities. You know, if you look at DOD, oftentimes, they come with big bases, and the individuals tend to live on those bases, and they become their own little tiny cities in essence, and Coasties are not that way. We really try to integrate into our cities, and yes, we have Coast Guard housing in a place that our members have a good place to come home to every night. About half of our members go in there, the rest of us go out on the community, and we really try to integrate into our communities and, and just become one of you. And, and it's absolutely fantastic to be able to come to a location like Humboldt County and just have that, that background and that acceptance, and especially to just have a city that is designated as a Coast Guard city, because it, it just makes our time and ability to integrate that much easier. So, on behalf of the two-hundred-and-twenty-three people that work for Sector Humboldt Bay and all of our sub-units, I, I very much appreciate the honor of being part of what Eureka is and Humboldt County at large. So, thank you for this opportunity to come in and say hello to everyone.
Thank you very much. Did either of you want to say anything? Alright.
So, there's a rule in the Coast Guard to never go after the captain speaks, or something like that, so.
Natalie probably knew that.
Yeah.
Also, we'd like to recognize our own Coastie right here at the dais. Councilmember Arroyo is what we call her.
Yes. And, and, you know, for a little bit of background, you know, Natalie was fantastic. I showed up two years ago in the height of COVID, and we had brought Natalie onboard for the opportunity to utilize her as a resource during COVID, and, and she was just fantastic. And another really neat integration piece, right, to have a Coastie member sitting on, on the city council gives us a little bit of insight to how things work, and, you know, how do we, how do we make different things happen? So, she was a great asset to have for about nine months, I think we had you over there, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Always seeing you.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. Enjoy the rest of your activities. I'll see you guys on Thursday.
Yeah, we'll be there.
And that is the end of my Mayor's Report today, so we are going to move on to our public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Do we have anybody here who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Council, everybody else, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanna say the same thing I say here every time. You got a big problem in Eureka with homeless drug addicts. You're trying to throw a bunch of money at fixing the roads and changing everything up, and I don't believe none of them are gonna follow the rules or utilize any of that. I think you're still gonna have the same problem. You might wanna throw some money at cleaning up the city and trying to help these people that are addicted to drugs, homelessness, mental illness. Eating at Applebee's with my kids, right outside the window, two or three drug addicts, loitering, doing drug deals, right? I mean, nobody wants to eat dinner and see that crap spitting all over the place, worried about your car being broken into. I had a friend, her car was broken into about a month ago at Applebee's while she was eating there. People were talking about Kenny, the orange-haired kid that walks up and down, usually by In-N-Out or that area there. I consider Kenny a friend of mine. I've done what I can to help him. I've given him money to watch him just go across the street and buy heroin. And I bought him shoes, they're gone in a week, his feet are bleeding. Nobody's doing nothing about the Kennys that are out there. And it's, it's really sad to me. I think that money could be used for something like that instead of trying to redo all the streets. I mean, if you think a drug addict is gonna go to that bulb-out, big crosswalk, they're just not gonna do it. I see so many close calls every time I drive through Eureka. It's terrible. I mean, they're not only in the medium, but they're actually in the two lanes, like either going north or south, waiting by the dotted lines, you know, and there's a car here and here, and they're in between it just, I mean. One person texting, even bumps that person, they're dead, even thirty, forty miles an hour. That's it. I just think the money could be used better elsewhere. And I think you need to do something about cleaning up all the needle litter. I know there's a big change coming, some council members are leaving, and I heard that you weren't gonna rerun, and, whoever gets back up here needs to do something to clean up this town. That's the bottom line, and that would solve a lot of issues. And I understand the laws. You can't just do anything you want with homeless people. But you could try to help some of them, and you could try to hold some of accountable, aggressive panhandling. It's hard to go anywhere without it. Everywhere you go, same old story, especially in Eureka. And I'm not saying Fortuna ain't bad, 'cause it is. It's bad a lot of places. But can't we try to do something about it to help the people that need help? And you guys probably think I'm against homeless people. I mean, I am, if you're out on drugs throwing needles everywhere, but, you know, I have compassion, just like anybody else. Like, I care about Kenny. I've tried to help him before, and he want, he doesn't want nothing to do with it. He won't go to the mission because he doesn't wanna follow rules. And, you know, he's living in there behind In-N-Out in the brush, throwing needles everywhere. Think about Kenny and all the other Kennys that are around here, walking around with a sleeping bag over their head, dropping needles, and try to help them out, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Name's Harry Wilcox, sixteen-year resident transplant from New York City. And I used to love this place. I really did. But in the last five years, I've watched it degrade. And I wrote some stuff for the last meeting, but it was canceled, so I didn't get it, so I'm gonna try to run it real quick. The art projects are beautiful, they're a nice idea, they make the atmosphere better, but I think we're reaching a point where it's almost becoming childish. It's almost overdone. It's starting to look a little weird. I think that money could be better placed in things that are really of concern to the people of Eureka instead of art distractions, which is long-term mental health services, long-term, and I mean long-term, drug rehabilitation facilities, street maintenance, which is horrible. I mean, I've watched my street, which is N Street, go from a beautiful, impressive, cross-town section to a pothole-ridden situation where I've had to replace my front end of my car four times, and my roommate's two and three, the whole Bendix Drive, the whole drive system. Well, also, we need to improve this town, roads, residences, so that we can attract better medical care. For a sound and, oh, a county as beautiful and big as this is, we have the crummiest medical care. I've had six heart attacks, and once they sent me home in the middle of one after sitting in their ER waiting room eighteen hours. No one should have to sit eighteen hours before they get seen by a doctor. But their excuse was, no doctors. Okay? I can't go to Mad River, 'cause they just transferred me back to St. Joseph's for that type of cardiac situation. So, we need to attract more doctors and nurses and medical staff to this town. I know one of the concerns was dentistry, but what good is dentistry gonna do if you can't even stand up? Because your cardiac situation is so bad, and, and your legs are so bad. Like, my hand is going to waste because I can't get anything done. A lot of people look to you, look here and say, it's all the Eureka Council's fault. It's not. It's our fault for voting people who don't care into these seats. We have got to do our due diligence. We've gotta look at the people we put on the council and mayor and other positions, or we have no one to blame but ourselves. And I say, most of all, most important, vote. Don't just sit on your butts and do nothing. Get out here and vote, and vote for the people you feel will most improve this city. Thank you.
I wish the captain of the crew would've stuck around. I had a little bone to chew with them, because my youngest daughter married a Coastie here a couple of years ago, who was going through training. And where's the very first place that they sent my youngest daughter? Kodiak, Alaska. And, but they made up for it, because the next station was Florida, so I guess they did alright, but, yeah, I was kinda bent at them at first. My God, send a nineteen-year-old woman and her twenty-year-old husband up to Kodiak, Alaska for a first posting? But, but, you know, like I said, they made up for it. But I have nothing but respect for those men. Beyond that, you know, some of the things that they brought up, and some of the things I bring up every time, you know? I bring up the total misdirection that we're going in as far as grant funding. Things like the Dirt Center, I mean Earth Center. You know, something that was, I'm sure the grant was applied for using pretty catchphrases like connectivity and sustainability and zero emissions and, and low-income housing and, 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 you know, lower carbon, through solar panels and all this stuff. But the reality of it is, is that, that thirty million dollars is going to do very little towards helping any of those problems. You know, the, what is it, thirty-one units that are supposed to be in that thing? Some of them are for traveling medical professionals, which is just a ludicrous joke. There, there, I've, I know a lot of medical professionals, I know a lot of people who are property owners, landowners, and they all tell me that there's no medical professional, professional in their right mind that's going to want to rent a place, a high-dollar place, in a low-income housing unit next to a bus stop full of junkies shooting up all the time, especially when they have to park five blocks away and ride an electric scooter to their apartment at whatever time of night that they get off work, because medical professionals don't work nine-to-five. You know, they work odd hours, they work lots of hours, and they're, they'll be coming and going from this, this ludicrous housing situation in the middle of the night, having to leave their cars down an A Street or L Street or Seventh Street to be broken into by the time they get back to them. How any of this could be seen as a positive part of the community or wise expenditure of money is just beyond me, as well as the nightmare up there by Sequoia Park? How could anyone possibly think that making those roads one lane is gonna benefit anything? Do you, you do realize Kramer has a huge development proposed for up there that's gonna add thousands of cars a day to that route? And yet, you're wanting to make one-lane traffic both ways in the name of bicycle lanes? I mean, just because you're gonna get millions of dollars for bicycle lanes doesn't mean that you, that you need to destroy the access to a large part of the community. It's just insane.
Good evening. I wanna start by saying, I do not expect you to have solutions to all our community issues. But I do expect you to submit to the Lord and seek His face on behalf of our community. If what you're doing is not and is not working, and you keep doing it, that's called insanity. Why not give Jesus the opportunity to demonstrate to you that He truly is Lord and Savior and has our solutions? What do you have to lose except your lives? It is not that I do not care about the complaints I hear spoken against you. I do care. We all know wearing masks doesn't prevent COVID. The vaccines and boosters do not either. The Free Needles to Drug User Plan is a total fail and only promotes drug use. I do care about these issues and how you all are unable to find solutions, but I deal with these things in my prayers. However, what I care about the most is your salvation. This city is important to God. If you love your city, you will want to see people come to Jesus Christ and will sacrifice and step forward to make that difference in somebody else's life. Peter says, "If anyone speaks, it should be as if it's God's words coming through. If anyone serves, it should be from the strength of God that He provides, so that God may be glorified through Jesus Christ in everything. To Him be the glory and the power forever and ever. Amen." The key points are, number one, God's glory, and number two, His power. Loving your city and others is about God's glory and power. That's what it's about. It's not about loving your city because they have the best art displays or the best food. It's not about your ideas in service to the city. It's always about God. It's about God wanting to use you so that His love is known to the world. You have this moment before you. It's time you get up on the rooftops of this city and shout, "I want to be," about what Jesus wept over, and that's this city. Because this city is important to God, it is now important to me. I pray that God continues to have mercy upon you and guide you in things that you decide to do for this city. I pray for you. I pray for your families, and I also pray for your protection, because you have a lot of things coming at you. But I pray for your protection and the protection of your family members. It's only by God's grace that we are all here, and I pray that you one day embrace this. Amen?
You guys know me, Suzie Smith, and I am once again here before the, you, you all for the Sewer Lateral Ordinance. I don't know where it's at, at this particular moment in time, but I'm here to say I was sued personally and paid far more than the seller who lied on the sale of his home. So, I'm getting lots of calls from realtors going, hey, we know you researched the issue. What do we do? How do we deal with this? Where do we go? What do we ask? What do we do? So, please tell me when the new ordinance is gonna come out so that, and I'd be glad to be the person that takes it back to the, all the realtors. Please tell me when this is gonna be revised and what's happening with it, 'cause it costs me personally a butt-load of money. That's it.
Thank you. You can reach out via email. Reach out via email, and we can answer.
Okay.
My name is Charles Wilson. Genevieve, Steve, and I have been protesting the Corona nonsense on the Humboldt County Courthouse corner for two years now. That's what, we haven't missed a day. Together, we're two-hundred-and-thirty-two years old. We're not dead yet, and we're not gonna die just because the Corona comes along. We make our own posters, which change. We're like cheerleaders. Flags wave, we wave. Most of the people wave back in their car there, and initially, we got fifteen to twenty honks. That was two years ago, but now that people have had their own personal experience with the COVID, and they know what it's all about and what it isn't, we get something like seven or eight hundred honks. We protest from three to six on Fridays. Eight to twenty-five other people come, loosely come. We'd never advertise or anything like that, but they loosely come and do their own thing there. The anti-Texas group came six times for an hour, and they congregated by, by the steps there for their photo. One said, "I couldn't use my body, my choice, because it was theirs." I guess they figured they patented it or something. The only time we made the media was a fake photo. You could tell by the background it wasn't the courthouse. Fortunately, we've only had three days of mist, no rain. We did see a distant rainbow, which was nice, over to the north there. So, in the summer, the sun shines on the chrome on the cars. In winter, the sun ducks behind the old post office there, and, and so it doesn't get in your eyes there. And the water tower, when you look down the street, looks just like a alien spaceship. Power and light poles mark time like giant sundials. Maybe media and government promote fear and hate. One woman shouted, "I wish I could run you all over." Another threw a rock. "Get a job, you hippie," was one quaint guy. One drove straight at me and then swerved three feet away. One guy drives by several times and shouts obscenities with a bullhorn. We get three to four fingers. Genevieve responds with, "Number one, number one," and they drop the finger. Abuse doesn't bother us because they're not acting like robots. Nobody reacts the same way to a billboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Genevieve Wilson. I care about the people. That's why we always there, out there protesting. And I also share the information I have with people. So, I got banned from grocery outlet, and then they, I cannot buy the, see the watermelon. So, the other day, she say, "You are not getting permission from the owner. I never even see the owner." So, one day, I went in there, buy my two watermelon and come out, and guess what? The same lady always yelled at me. I was talking to somebody. She say, "Stop harassing people." I think she's harassing me. They say, "You got your watermelon?" I say, "Yes, freedom of speech." And also, I never even see the owner, but I got banned. This is kinda ridiculous. But anyway, by the way, they say watermelon seeds like Viagra, okay? But anyway, another thing is something very concerned about Steve's wife. She was, she was, she had to take the shot, so go with, going with him when he was in emergency. A nurse gave her a shot on the arm with COVID, another shot with a flu vaccine, flu shot. It's not, anybody should not do that. I would like to find out so that nobody injured like her to suffer. My point, going in a hospital for thirteen times is kinda half-dead. I had people told me, they'd rather die than take the shot. We look around, all the friends we have have a vaccine injury. And right now, I think CDC say they don't do any more testing, and then we still have to do testing. I'm a nurse for forty-five years. I cannot find a job, because I, I don't have to work. But my point is, we are short of nurses. You, I have to get tested twice a week to, in, in order to work. That's ridiculous. Do I know I'm sick? I know that somebody have to dig my nose to find out? So, anyway, it's a tyranny affecting us, and people want to say, "Oh, my goodness, monkeypox is coming." Fear is a real virus, so you gotta take care of yourself, take your vitamin D, plenty of sleep. Speak for myself, because I do so many things, so busy, and then keep yourself healthy, because you get anything if you're not healthy. That's all I want to tell everybody. And same old thing, or rebound. And same old thing, or we want you, love and freedom, we all wanted, right? Even little kids, two-years-old say, "No." Okay, if something that you not agree with us, you know, so we should be happy all our life. That's why, that, just love and freedom and treat people with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in house who would like to say something? If not, I see we have a couple of folks online and I can't read the names, so could you call them, please?
The first one is The Dude. You're on mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Ash Teeter here. Just wanted to chime in on a lot of what some of the other people were saying earlier. I know the city's having staffing problems, the medical field are having staffing problems, the hospitals having staffing problems. And, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of reasons for it, but part of it's kind of self-induced. I mean, with the, the whole vax mandates, you know, you're, you're discriminating against a lot of people that would, you know, probably gladly come in and work with you. And that's kind of going against even the mainstream science now and the new CDC COVID-19 guidance. There's, those exposed to the virus are, you know, no longer required to quarantine. Unvaccinated people now have the same guidance as vaccinated people. Students can stay in class after being exposed to the virus. And it's no longer recommended to screen those without any symptoms. So, and I think it's time to get on and move over. You made the decision to institute the, you know, the mandate that cost my, my wife her job for no other reason than not wanting to take, you know, an experimental treatment. And beyond that, and I live out past Cotten, and that one lane system that was being proposed there, I don't know like how many, how much kind of grant incentives is being, you know, offered to push that, but that is not safe. I took my kid to the playground there and it took me like dang near five minutes to merge back in with traffic because it was so thick. And just imagine being someone trying to cross the street, like playing Frogger or something. Yeah, and that, that and just the whole, I know, you know, getting all this grant money for the electric bus systems and just the whole, you know, putting the cart before the horse on this whole green new, green new ordeal. You know, we're going to ditch all of our cars, you know, gas cars and have, everyone's going to drive electric vehicles. But just imagine all the, all the slave labor that goes into mining these like cobalt. Like all child slave labor right there. I mean, how is that even like feasible or how is that like humane in any way? Is that, and does that give you the moral upper hand? You know, just pat yourself on the back for driving an electric vehicle while child slavery is mining the, the very ingredients? And then what after, what about after the batteries expire? Where do they go? They just go in landfills, like all the windmill blades for the offshore winds and stuff? And like giant fiberglass things, you just, what do you do with them? They don't have an after-purpose. If we're, you know, shifting to all this stuff, what is the long-term plan? It's not really a plan. You look at it, it's an agenda. There, there's no forethought into how this is, you know, going to play out, the effect it's going to have.
Thank you very much. That's your time.
Okay, have a good one.
And the next is a number.
Phone number ending in 5288.
Hello, this is Kent Swazki, phone number 5288. Can you hear me today?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I spent my time in the supervisor's meeting and I want to let Natalie Arroyo know what she's going to face. They started at nine. They were still going at 5:57 today, off in closed section when I switched over to your meeting. So be prepared for that. I, I had, there were some interesting things, something that will be brought to you. And maybe you can even reach out to Sophia there with Humboldt County Health. Something that made total sense to me and the supervisors tend to be leading this one hopefully. And it's some regulations on tobacco. And I think we all realize, and especially on all the bubblegum flavored things that everybody has out there, you know, where they vape that and things. So anyway, hopefully a partnership will come between all the cities and, and Eureka especially to make sure that they have regulations such as this isn't sold within 600-foot of schools. It's a very good idea, so hopefully you'll reach out to that. And lastly, I, I wanted to say I guess, I guess one of you is running unopposed. Congratulations on that for the, for the council there. And, and I do support Kim Brigell as far as your mayor goes. And hopefully she'll be running unopposed. We'll find out tomorrow, I guess. So anyway, thank you for my opportunity to speak today. Some of the same speakers speak every single meeting in the supervisor's chambers. And I always strongly support everybody's right to say, we did have one person in there today who was very close to be escorted out and possibly banned from the chamber. So maybe he'll visit you sometime. I hope not, interrupting the meeting. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today and look forward to, to seeing Natalie come January in one of the early meetings in supervisor chambers.
Thanks, Kent. And now we have Dino Novello.
Hi, my name is Dino Novello and, and I've been with the city now for, I lived here in the city for almost 25 years. Can't believe it's been that long. But unlike the previous people that came before me, I'm going to try to keep mine on the positive side. I want to, even though I've lived here for 25 years, it's been great living here. But there's been a couple of situations that I've been reminded most recently of, of how good we do have it here. One of those things is the fact that we acknowledge the land that we live in and the people that came before us. Just last month, I shared this in a previous meeting, that we, we got, we went to Salt Lake City and we got a tour of, of the Salt Lake. And the first thing that came out of our tour guide is, yeah, this is the land that Brigham Young came to this land and cleared out this entire area. And that was very shocking and it, it was quite embarrassing too. And the fact that there wasn't any acknowledgement of the people that came before us. And, and I just want to encourage you guys that, that thank you for including that in the agendas. I wish that that agenda would be, or I wish that land acknowledgement would be in, in all of the city agendas that, that have in the other commissions and groups that form. And I would maybe even encourage you guys to maybe even read that too, just to recognize those that came before us. But having it there, acknowledging that, yeah, we're not perfect, but there's people that came before us as well. And then the other thing too that I wanted to share with you, I know someone else commented about homeless and, and we do have it good. And so just seeing the work that's been going on with the city, with the county and all that, it's just been going well. And most recently, I was also reminded of that, how North Korea does not have a homeless problem. And it's because they lock up, or they put people, they put everybody who is homeless into a building, into a high-rise that is 10 stories high with no elevators and they turn off the power after 7 o'clock. And so, yeah, the things that we, we do have a homeless problem, but it's not as bad as, as we have it as there's going on in other places. And so, and so things are going good. And also too, I wanted from, I have family that lives in Tijuana. I don't know if people have heard, but in Tijuana, they've had devastating killings and massacres going on and people shooting up public transport buses because of the drugs and trafficking that's going on. And so I'm just glad that we do live in a city that we feel safe, even though I have a bruise on my nose where I just fell while riding my electrical scooter. But it's not as bad as, as there are in other countries and even locations in, in this country. So I just want to thank you all and keep up with the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else online, so it looks like we have, everybody in the audience has had a chance to speak, I believe, that's wanted to. So we'll move on to our public hearings. Item E1, Pearson Properties General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification. And for that, we are going to hear from Senior Planner Lisa Savage.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is Pearson Properties General Plan Map Amendment and Zone Reclassification to change the land use designation and zoning of 3116 Harrison Avenue. Here's a bird's eye view of the subject property location. Zooming in, the property is located at the southwest corner of Harris Street and Harrison Avenue. To the east of the center line of Harrison Avenue is the county's jurisdiction. Although the property has two APNs, APN 013-191-026 and 027, it is one legal parcel totaling .66 acres. APN 027 is improved with a 3,000-square-foot office building. Looking south from Harris Street, you can see Schaefer's Ace Hardware in the background. And looking east from Harrison Avenue, you can see the entrance to the building. The proposed project is to change the general plan land use designation from professional office in Brown to neighborhood commercial NC in Tan, which is the same neighborhood commercial as the designated lands to the north across Harris Street. The land use change would then require the site to be re-zoned from hospital medical in blue to neighborhood commercial in pink, which is the same neighborhood commercial as the zoning to the north across Harris Street. The applicant intends to use the existing building for non-medical offices, which is not allowed under the current zoning. The proposed change will facilitate the reuse of a vacant structure for medical or commercial offices as well as a number of other uses. So what does this do? The change in land use and zoning will allow greater flexibility of use of the parcel. Both the current and proposed zoning will allow a similar mix of use types, but the current HM zoning only allows offices and some commercial sales, service, and civic uses if they are intended to serve medical uses. The proposed NC zone district allows for both medical and commercial offices as well as a number of other uses. In addition, certain uses under the POHM designation that require a use permit will be principally permitted under the NC NC designation, thereby making changes in uses simpler, more streamlined, and not restricted to primary-serving medical uses. Under the current HM zoning, the maximum floor area ratio, or FAR, is 2.5, which will increase to 3 under the NC zoning. A FAR of 2.5 allows up to 72,000 square feet of floor area on the .66 acre parcel. And with the increase to a FAR of 3, the maximum floor area will increase to 86,400 square feet, thereby allowing for denser development. The ability to add multifamily residential units in the future will not be lost and will actually increase because multifamily dwelling units will go from being conditionally permitted to principally permitted. On April 19th, the city council held a public hearing and adopted a resolution approving the petition authorizing the applicant to apply for the general plan amendment and zone reclassification for the subject parcel. On July 27th, the planning commission held a public hearing and adopted a resolution recommending the city council approve the amendments. Tonight is the first of two city council meetings. This meeting is a public hearing to receive public testimony and then staff is recommending you introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning map. At your next meeting on September 20th, staff will recommend council adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map as well as a resolution to approve the general plan amendment. For tonight, staff is recommending council receive a report and hold a public hearing. And then based on the analysis in the staff report, introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning from HM to NC. And I have a suggested motion when you're ready. And myself and Principal Planner Kristin Getz can answer any of your questions you may have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? I don't see any, so I will open the public hearing and ask, is there anybody here either in the room or online who have something they would like to say about this? Okay, I don't see any questions, so I'll close the public hearing part, or any comments, so I'll close the public hearing. I will bring it back for discussion, in which case you can also ask a question.
Thank you. I was just curious, are we suffering for medical office space in the area? Is there any reason why we, why releasing this to other uses would be detrimental?
We haven't had any comments regarding there not being enough medical office space in the area.
Thank you.
And if the demand was there, they could use it all for medical office space if they need it.
Yes, it can be used for medical office space. So it, it gives it more flexibility, so it can be used for a commercial space now that it's vacant. And then if in the future they needed it for medical office space, it could also be used for that.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any further comments or discussion or a motion? And Councilmember Arroyo? I don't know why I thought you would just talk without me acknowledging you.
I'm waiting. I moved that we waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 1017 Tax CS and Ordinance of the City of Eureka amending, amending the inland zoning map to reclassify the property at 3116 Harrison Avenue from hospital medical to neighborhood commercial. And do I, do we also need to do the land use designation in addition to the zoning?
I think you're done.
Okay. I, I just saw that there was a land use designation change, but that's covered when we do zoning as well.
All right, so we have a motion.
I guess that was a question. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moulton, second?
I did, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion or are we ready to vote? Let's vote. We could see the reaction up close.
Four yes votes.
And Mr. Pearson, we've got your face like giant on our screen right now, so like when we voted, we can get your reaction. You want the big happy smile.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Bauer absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And next item is another public hearing, E2 Coastal Signs Text and Local Coastal Program Amendment. This is Principal Planner Getz.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the introduction of a bill for the coastal sign ordinance, which was adopted by the Coastal Commission with modifications on July 13th, 2022. The ordinance covers the coastal portion of the city, which is the colored portion here on the map. And in 2020, staff proposed a coastal sign amendment to rescind and replace Article 17 of Title 10, Chapter 5, also known as the Old Code, with an updated coastal sign ordinance. The proposed amendment generally incorporated the land, the inland sign ordinance into the coastal zoning code. In June 2022, city staff received a copy of modifications Coastal Commission staff was going to recommend to the Coastal Commission. Staff was able to affect some changes to the commission recommendations and believe that the ordinance as proposed with the suggested modifications could potentially be acceptable to the city. The changes agreed to at the staff level included modifying or adding language about routine maintenance, public access, master and creative sign permits, categorical exclusions, and coastal development permits. Coastal development permits are currently required for some signs in some locations, so that's not changing with this amendment. However, more often than not, there's an exemption that we can use. And in fact, the last time I can remember doing a coastal development permit specifically for a sign was in approximately 2010 or 11, when we did one for... was in approximately 2010 or 11, when we did one for the old truck stop that used to be down on Broadway. The changes at staff level also removed language allowing digital signs in the industrial zones. And for those, there was a concern about light and glare on coastal resources, since a number of the industrial zone properties are on or near the waterfront and the trail. And finally, the language is modified to allow the director to determine the types and sizes of signs allowed in the natural resource and coastal agricultural zones. At the public hearing held at the Coastal Commission, again on July 13th, additional changes were proposed pertaining to digital signs. The changes included adding language indicating digital signs should comply with the International Dark Sky Association Guidance for Luminance Levels and Curfews, and also requiring a creative sign permit for digital signs. The International Dark Sky Guidance, which we're referencing here tonight, was created specifically for electronic message centers. And oftentimes, we use a reference to a document or to a regulation without including the actual regulation or limitation in our zoning code. That way, if the reference document or regulation is changed, we don't have to do an amendment to the zoning code. One exception to that practice for this ordinance happens to be adding a limit on the luminance of digital signs. And that limitation is 160 nits. And a nit is a measurement of how much light a screen sends to your eye within a given area. I believe the Coastal Commission wanted this particular regulation in our code so that if the level does change, it provides them an opportunity to continue to control the nit level, because we would have to do an amendment to the zoning code. Additionally, the Coastal Commission recommended that the city rethink allowing digital signs at all, citing concerns about light, glare, coastal resource protections, and driver distraction. So as noted in the staff report, while the ordinance limits signs in certain zones more than was originally proposed by the city, moving forward with the ordinance as approved by the commission means the city will no longer need to enforce outdated and even more restrictive sign regulations, which were actually developed in the 1960s. If there are aspects of the ordinance we would like to try and change in the future, we can always include alternate language in the upcoming local coastal program update. And just so you know, if we don't accept the commission's action to approve the ordinance and instead decided to revise the language as proposed in this version, we would actually end up having to start all over again, as if it were a new amendment. And we would have to wait six months before we could resubmit the amendment back to the Coastal Commission. So given all of that, staff is recommending that you hold a public hearing and introduce bill number 1018 CS for the coastal sign ordinance. And I do have a suggested motion whenever you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
All right, do we have question? We have lots of questions, so we'll start with Councilmember Castellano. We'll just go through the wards.
Let's see, first question, I think is probably an easy question. And that is the planned shopping center zone district. Is that basically the Bayshore Mall area, or what? Okay, I just was trying to imagine that in my head.
Yes, CP zoning is the Bayshore Mall.
Okay, thank you. And then I was curious, just how easy or difficult is it to get a creative sign permit? Like what's the process for that?
So a creative sign permit is a discretionary process. It is through, or in front of the design review committee, or if there's another discretionary permit that's being acted upon by the Planning Commission, then they would act on the creative sign permit. It's a public hearing, 10 days' notice, just like for any other public hearing. There are findings that have to be made, so it is a little bit more involved than maybe coastal signs have been. But we have creative sign permits in the inland side of the city, and so far, they've been working well, in my opinion.
Great, and is there a fee associated with that process?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Right, Councilmember Moulton.
Okay. So I hear what you're saying about not including the entire regulations from the Dark Sky Association in our ordinance. But when you dig into the Dark Sky regulations, there's kind of a lot in there, including things like not just luminance, but also curfews, times of day when things need to be shut down, lighting zones of the city based on predetermined definitions of how those areas are used, and then the lighting limits would be determined by the zones. Okay, so I guess my question is, will the Dark Sky ordinance regulations only apply to digital signs under creative signs? Or will other signs that are also shining light into the sky be asked to limit their luminance or meet these other requirements?
As proposed, it will only apply to digital signs. In the, in the future, when we do the zoning code update for the coastal zone, there will probably be a requirement in a different section for Dark Sky compliance.
So you see in the future, potentially, this sort of regulation coming across all the city? Because it seems to me like, why would we make this regulation on one kind of sign and not another if it's not about the sign, if it's about light going up into the sky?
Sure, I certainly understand that. We do have Dark Sky compliance requirements on the inland side of the city, too.
Would the Dark Sky compliant, would the density limits that they recommend then take into account just digital signs? Or would it also take into account these other signs before anything else happens, before any other regulations go in place?
I think just digital signs.
Okay. And what about the lighting zones? Who will be defining these lighting zones?
We will have to make that determination at the department level.
And then in Dark Sky, they recommend that you, the best way to test the luminance of a sign is before it's installed, coming straight out of the manufacturer, because there's like, has to be this far, has to be white, has to not have other lights around in order to get an accurate measurement. Will this be something that's part of the permitting process? Or will it be complaint-based after the fact? If somebody sees a sign and says, I think that's too bright?
It will be both. So they will have to provide the information to us when they apply for their creative sign permit. And then if somehow or other they change after it's been installed and approved and installed, then it would be complaint-driven.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal.
Thank you for the presentation and all of this work that it took to do all this back and forth. My question at this juncture is, so you did say that if we made any modifications, it would have to go back through the whole process. If we decided to say, you know what, we don't want any more digital signs in the coastal zone, would that also have to go back through? Or was that because they said, hey, we'd really like it if you did this? That recommendation was already made as one alternative. So I guess I'm trying to understand, do we have both options available to us tonight? Or in this iteration of the process?
You do not, unfortunately. So if you chose to completely disallow digital signs or put further restrictions on them tonight, we would start the process all over again. Doesn't mean that tomorrow, we can't start a new process for digital signs. That would certainly be up at council's direction. Or we could work through that process when we do the coastal zoning code update in the future.
Okay, and then kind of in line with Councilmember Castellano's question, you described the process for getting that creative sign permit, and then what review board it goes before. What is the, do you have a sense of the cost that would be associated with that endeavor?
I think the fee, including engineering fees, is in the vicinity of $900.
Okay, okay. Do you know offhand how that compares to other signs?
If you need design review for any sign, that's the fee.
Oh, I see, okay. And then the creative sign permit, is that an extra cost as well?
No.
Okay.
I think it's the same. I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, sorry, but.
Okay, we did receive some community member communication that I at least received right before this meeting, with a very different cost. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what that was.
Yeah, if, if it is different, it's probably only a couple of hundred dollars different for the creative sign. You may have heard somebody talking about a coastal development permit.
Right.
The cost for that was up around $1,400.
Okay, okay. And that's a separate matter that wouldn't, wouldn't apply. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Brugel.
That actually clarified my question. I am curious, though, I had a community member tell me that with the coastal permit, it was three times the amount to do a sign, is that true? To do a coastal zone sign?
I'm trying to think. The fees for the coastal signs will be very similar to what the inland signs are now, and we'll actually have to come back to you to make that change in the fee schedule. So we may do that at your September 20th meeting, too, or the one right after that. So the numbers that I'm quoting for you tonight are the ones from the inland side.
And I just wanted to add to that, that this particular community member did say that we were a lot easier to work with than the state agency, so thank you for that.
We like that.
All right, have you thought of any other questions? Or do you want me to open up the public hearing? We're all good? All right, that was nice and efficient, I liked it. I will now open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on the item of the coastal signs? In the, in the building or online? Come on in.
Sorry. This is kind of coming from the Multiple Listing Service Committee that I serve on with the association. And how is this going to affect our real estate signs? Because when we were reading through the information, it's like directional signs, you can't say where a house is for sale. How's that going to affect us, and is this part of this one? We just have seen the new sign ordinance coming out, so we'd like a little more clarification on that one.
All right, we'll probably address that when you sit down. Anything else? It's such an awkward process, I'm sorry. Anybody else here to speak on the public comment? Or on the public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back for discussion and comments. Councilmember Royal.
I'll take a stab at that and then ask maybe our staff to weigh in. So we're talking about digital signs specifically here. And so like the LED changeable message signs of any, of any kind, and there's a lot of detail about what constitutes those. So I have seen in some communities, including ours, some information about real estate listings that's on changeable message signs. And if those are in the coastal zone, this would apply. But if it's like, turn here to go to this open house, that's not, that's not the kind of signs that we're talking about here tonight. And any static signs or temporary signs would be a different matter. So I think I. A banner. It seems like, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Principal Planner Getz, but this is only related to digital signs that have some kind of changeable shining light digital interface. And so I know that sometimes the real estate community uses those, but I think generally what we're talking about is something, something different, so yeah.
Councilmember Brugel, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, oh, okay, good. So we'll start with Councilmember Brugel.
So I just wanted to say that, you know, if it were up to us today, I would prefer that we ban all digital signs. I don't think that they have a place in our city. However, that is something that can't be done right now. Currently, if we do not pass this ordinance, my understanding is, is that, you know, they're going to have a year, people will have a year to start working on, you know, getting these signs in, and we won't really have a lot of regulations. So what I would like to suggest is that we, that we accept the motion as written, and as a council, we come back and look at this when the LCP is changed out, and make modifications at that time for banning signs and looking at even sizes. And I guess I could make the motion, and then we can have a conversation if you want. Okay, I will.
Okay. Waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1018-CS to repeal and replace Eureka Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 5, Article 17, with the coastal sign ordinance and amend Article 1, General Article 18, Site Plan Review and Architectural Review, Article 22, Non-Conforming Uses, Structures and Signs, Article 26, Zoning Permits and Certificates of Occupancy, and Article 29, Coastal Development Permit Procedures Pertaining to Signs.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, and now we'll have discussion. So Councilmember, did you have something to say, add to, or?
I do, but I can wait.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Royal now.
Well, I was gonna, it looked like Principal Planner Getz was starting to say something, when I was asking, did I get it right? And so I didn't want to cut. I didn't want to give you that chance.
I just wanted to clarify for you that it's not just digital signs that we're talking about tonight. We are, are adopting, or will be at the next meeting, adopting regulations for all types of signs in the coastal zone, but there are exemptions and exceptions for real estate signs.
Exemptions and exceptions?
Yes.
Thank you. I was very focused on the digital sign component of it, so I skipped ahead to that. Thank you for clarifying, that is really important. Yes, I see, I see the, all the, we've had so much exciting conversation over the years about signs, and now I somewhat, I just as an editorial comment here, I, I'm happy to proceed with what staff have so carefully negotiated on our behalf and worked through. And I, if I could do things differently, I would probably just have the hutsbit to say, you know what, no more, no digital signs in the coastal zone. It felt like a different time when we were talking about that, and that the business community was saying that it was unfriendly to business, and we were trying to make some concessions there. But now, hearing some of the arguments from the Coastal Commission staff and Commissioner Wilson, I, I feel that it's a bit of a missed opportunity. So I do hope that when the LCP is updated, that that can come back. And I don't think I'll be here then, but I feel sure that I won't be. But I do think it, it's probably time to just say, you know what, we have to define this 101 corridor in particular, which is where people are going to want to put these, as a space where people need to focus on the road, and we, we don't need proliferation of signage in that particular way. And so that's my, that's my hope down the line. But it does seem like we have to move forward tonight with some, something.
I also want to apologize that I was paying attention to Councilmember Brugel, so I didn't see you wanting to, so thank you for clarifying. Councilmember Castellano, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Sure. Yes, I have similar concerns around digital signs, and I think there will be some opportunity in the LCP update. I also, you know, and in terms of that, I think, you know, I, I know there's some interesting conversations happening in the community around really thoughtful planning around the waterfront specific plan. And so I also see an opportunity maybe for, kind of, without getting too controlling, you know, but, but really creating like a creative vibrant kind of signage around the waterfront that, by vibrant, I don't mean digitally bright, but you know, something that kind of speaks to the, the beauty and wonder of, of the waterfront. So I don't know, like how we may be able to work that in. You know, aesthetic considerations are for sure personal. So, but, but you know, it's something I think to think about, like how we can kind of tie it into other kinds of planning ideas. And yeah, like I love neon signs, what's up with that? But, okay, that's, that's all I have, I think that's all I have to say for now.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Unanimous vote, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now we are going to move on to the consent calendar. I have not heard of anybody wanting to pull anything. Does anybody want to pull anything? All right, then do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Second?
I'll second.
All right, let's, can everybody please vote approval on that?
Unanimous vote, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
All right, so now we are moving on to legislative action correspondence. Does anybody have anything that is in need of quick correspondence? Nope. Alrighty. Then we'll move on to reports and action items and we always look forward to this. Why don't we do a break first so we can all be refreshed? And then we'll come back for our report from Eddie Alexander in five minutes.
Ready to hear from Eddie Alexander for a marketing presentation?
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for having me in today. I'm always really excited to present to Eureka City Council. There's been lots going on, so we'll run through the various stats as we always do and talk a little bit about what we expect in the months ahead. So the first thing I wanted to to share with you all, some of you have had an opportunity to share one on one. But unfortunately, we have lost our dear Emily Kerr. She is moved on to another position. She recently finished her PhD and had an opportunity to pursue a career path that was directly in line with that, having to do with international education. And so while we are really sad to lose her on her team, we're really excited for her and the opportunity there. But I did want to share with you all that there's a lot of folks working on this account. So in addition to posting a position to backfill her role, which is currently open, if anyone is interested in applying that might be watching tonight, we have a number of folks who work on this account day in and day out. And so I wanted to recognize a few of them. We have two newer members of the team that are here with me tonight. Catherine Fox is a specialist in destination development, coming to our team with more than thirty years of experience in tourism, marketing and destination planning and development. And Catherine, if you want to wave, so everybody knows who you are. And then Dan Pam Bianco is local here and out of our Eureka office downtown. He is a content marketing manager and also comes with significant experience in marketing communications, economic development and sports marketing as well. So we're really excited to have them on the team and working so hard and so diligently on all things Eureka. In addition to our two people here in the room, we have a number of other folks that are on this account, working almost every single day, day in and day out. So Bob Gilbert has been with us here in this room previously. He is our tourism practice lead, but unfortunately not here with me tonight. Jackie Lee is our Director of Client Success. Sherry Wallace is our Public Relations Lead and Philip Allman is our Graphic Design Lead. So they all touch the account quite frequently and are playing major roles in the success and the stats you're going to see tonight. So you guys are probably sick of this slide by now, but I share it every time I present. We just want to make sure we're continuously orienting towards what you all asked of us when you started this relationship. So we are focused on three primary objectives. City centric branding, which is now underway, and I have to tell you, every time I come back and I see more stuff branded and consistent, looking bright and beautiful throughout the city, it's always really a joy. Tourism marketing, so promoting the city to those outside the area that might bring in their money and their economic contributions with them. We're always happy to do that. And then quality of life promotion, the whole reason we promote tourism is to help support a rising quality of life for the folks who live here. So we want to create assets that attract folks from the outside and provide an enjoyable experience. But ultimately, while they're spending their dollars here in the community, that's driving an economic engine that contributes back into the local economy. So kind of the big picture message here tonight is that gas prices have slowed summer visitation a bit. June numbers were a little bit down year over year. Now, we think that's for a couple of reasons. One, gas prices were astronomically high in in June and we saw a slowdown in travel in general when compared to previous months and sentiment analysis around that. But we're we've not yet gotten the July numbers, so we're kind of waiting on those. But there's some silver lining to that. The increasing spend is demonstrating an improved value proposition. So while fewer people by number were coming to the town, they were spending more while they were here. So we believe that's a really good sign that the branding and the destination development efforts that have been kind of so carefully cultivated over the last many years, including things like the Skywalk are really paying off. So June occupancy was down in the hotels slightly year over year, but the average daily rate and the revenue averages per room, per available room, were both way up. So good sign, people are willing to pay more just to have the opportunity to come, even if it's harder to travel. This shows visitors are increasingly willing to spend a little bit more, to spend their time here and visit the community. And some of this is probably inflation rate. Some people would say, wasn't that inflation? Yes, but this far outpaces inflation. So this is a trend that we can put some trust in. And then this is coinciding with the increased average length of stay we saw last year and the improved tourism occupancy tax position of the city last year. So we're continuing to see good trends despite a bit of a blip. I hope it's a blip in June. We're still waiting on July numbers. From a media relations perspective, you guys probably remember we had a phenomenal year last year with all of the attention on the Redwood Skywalk. And my team will tell you, I've been putting a lot of pressure on them to make sure that we ride that wave and don't, you know, drop off a cliff when it comes to media attention. And they've been doing a good job continuing to get a drumbeat of positive news coverage about the city of Eureka from coast to coast. So recent coverage since the last time I presented to you all has included the New York Times, National Geographic, SF Gate, Al Jazeera and more. The topics covered have included the new Craftsman TV show, which we're all really excited about, the Samoa Cook House and the area's lumberjack traditions, the Waiat culture and the city of Eureka land transfer from a couple of years ago is continuing to make headlines around the globe. Spring break travel itineraries and destination recommendations, most affordable US beach towns and Humboldt Marble Weekend have all gained attention in national or international outlets. So that's pretty exciting. We also have some pretty significant coverage pending for the Moon Travel Guide and Dime Store Data. So two upcoming media mentions that we're pretty excited about. So the next thing I want to talk to you about, at first I was going to give you an update and then I thought maybe I'll call some friends up to share their news. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to bring the Hollenbecks up to give you a little bit of an update on how the Craftsman TV show is going. I do want to say this is such a treasure and such a treat for the community. I think the way that the production team has so carefully cultivated the inaccurate and authentic image of the community and a beautiful one at that is really a pretty special opportunity. So I wanted them to give kind of a quick update on how last season went and some of the things we can look forward to moving forward.
That's me running.
Jennifer asked us and we said, oh, but we're so shy. You want to go first?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So on my way over here, I was driving down J Street. And I thought, oh, my God, I live in the most beautiful town. All these nice houses and the trees and the flowers and the architecture. And I just felt so grateful that this particular team of people that we're working with at Magnolia Network has been able to convey that. I mean, you hear horror stories about people in that industry and we lucked out. They are fabulous. The same people that came for episode, Season One are back. They all, they're all freelancers and they all shifted their schedules around so that they could be here to work on this.
That's not public information.
I'm afraid it is now.
Oh, my God.
Just saying. They may have to shoot us and walk out the door.
So we we're restating that to say that we are looking forward to Season Two being aired when it comes around, but we don't know yet.
Perfect.
But the other thing that I was thinking about as I drove down here was I remembered Bonnie Ghul, who was our City Councilwoman in the mid seventies, who believed in Eric and backed him to form the what's now the Fourth of July Festival in Old Town way back then. And then, of course, Jack McKeller, who was a city councilman in the early nineties, who took Eric up to Trees of Mysteries and said, you guys could build something this good. So there have been a lot of people in this community that have believed in us and supported us and now we get to give back. Your turn.
So really, we we hope that actually, can I tell you the whole story? Can I take a minute? They called us. We didn't call them, they being the network. And they said, would you have your own television show? And I had the presence of mind, because I have to say it that way, because I don't have this all that often, to say, I'm going to have to talk to my wife. And that bought us three days to decide if we're going to do this. What do we want out of it? And we went back to them and said, okay, we'll we'll do this if we can do two things. Promote craftsmanship to the young people of the United States of America. And secondly, to show the crown jewel, one of the crown jewels of the United States that we live in, our community. And and I think that they have done and are doing a magnificent, magnificent job of that. And that's, so we won. And then I was telling Jennifer today that halfway through the filming, it dawned on me there could be a third. And the third one is what if we locals saw the crown jewel that we're living in? What if we saw it that way?
It's a good thing.
Yeah. That's a huge win. Thank you.
Thank you. We share that dream, Eric, every one of us up here.
So the part that I thought they were going to announce and that they've just confirmed that I can share publicly is that they've gotten word that HBO is picking up the show as well. So it'll be available starting in September on their streaming service. HBO has an audience of ninety million people, so it's pretty phenomenal that we were getting the show on the Magnolia Network, but this takes it to a whole nother level. So we are really, really excited from a tourism marketing perspective at how many people are going to see the treasure of this community that the Hollenbecks are and that their business is, but also just the beauty of the region that showcased so nicely in this really wholesome, family friendly TV show and production. So we're really excited about that. You you don't always get that kind of opportunity. So we just wanted to take a moment to to celebrate that and applaud the contributions of the Hollenbeck to the marketing program through an impromptu kind of way and route. So thank you for coming today, guys. Okay, so in addition to, you know, TV shows and websites and advertising and all those things, our team is also really active on social media. We are really, really excited about all of the events that are coming back to the community. I know all of you all are as well, because I look at those pictures all day, every day. And we see lots and lots of you out enjoying the different festivals that are coming back. And so we're really excited about that. Since the last time I presented to you guys in in March of last year or of this year, we have been promoting events on the Visit Eureka social media handles and websites. There's been more than fifty-three different events in the city of Eureka alone just since April. And we've been partnering with a variety of different community groups to get the word out on those in a number of different ways. In addition to the events, there's been posts and promotions of historic facts, local assets, notable narratives and stories and traditions, and then visitor planning information and evergreen kind of things to see and do, the beaches and the and the hiking trails and and all of that. So I want to encourage you, if you don't currently follow the social media handles for Visit Eureka, please do. They're great for locals and they're great for locals to tell their friends about outside the area as well. So we just wanted to take a moment to recognize that as well. We launched the new website when we launched the new brand, I guess, almost two years ago now. Time flies. And we had such tremendous results out of the performance, the analytics on that website right away that was excited about that right from the jump, but also a little nervous about how could we possibly maintain those levels of numbers? And I'm really pleased to report tonight that our numbers continue to increase and are trending in all the right directions. Our users are up one hundred and seventy-six percent, almost one hundred and seventy-seven percent year over year. Our total sessions are up more than two hundred percent. Our page views are up over a hundred percent. And from January one of this year to July thirty-first of this year, our users are up fifty percent and our sessions are up sixty-six percent. So lots of good traffic, lots of people coming and seeing what we have to do. And a big part of that is driven by how much event activity is happening. So if you are out in the community watching tonight and you are organizing events or aware of events, please make sure you're going to visit eureka.com and uploading your event onto the event calendar. That's how we find out what's going on and how we can then cross promote and share that out with a larger audience. We're also driving traffic to the website through a variety of channels. So some of it is organic. Some of it is based on the content and people doing searches related to that. About half of that traffic is coming from paid search advertising campaigns that are driving in through very specific strategies and to very specific groups of people in feeder markets that we've previously identified. Some of that audience is also coming through various social channels, through email marketing campaigns, direct traffic, people just sort of typing in the URL and other referral methods as well. So on the advertising front, our campaigns are also continuing to to perform very well. The Visit Eureka ad campaign, I think we talked about it last time, it's it's split up into three different target market and audience segments. So there is a arts and architecture, a, I'm sorry, history and architecture, arts and culture, and outdoor recreation specific campaign. And each of those target people who are interested in those kinds of vacations, as evidenced by the other places they search on the internet. So our campaigns are averaging two and a half million impressions per month. So people who are seeing the ads and they're averaging over eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand clicks per month. So that's how many people are kind of coming to the website direct from the ads. That's, as you saw in that previous graphic, about half of the ad traffic that is coming. And then we look at which kind of we we almost compete the ad campaigns against each other to see if we should be emphasizing more of one of the pillars of our campaign over another. And so far, they they kind of vary by time of year and there's no clear winner. But right now, architecture, art and architecture and history and architecture and arts and culture are performing a little bit better than outdoor recreation. And that surprised me because it's summer, so I just thought I would share it as a matter of note. But I do think it does a good job of, you know, when we first came in, there was some question about, hey, if we're only promoting the trees and the beaches, yes, they're wonderful and important to promote. But if we're only promoting them, are we helping our local businesses? And I think this is showing that the distinction that Eureka has to offer in the region is really resonating as a message with the audiences we're talking to. So I think that's a positive. In addition to the ad campaign for the city itself, we're also running ads for the Redwood Skywalk as a attraction. This was part of the investment strategy and the commitment we made to some of the funders to make sure that we're continuing to drive traffic and reinvesting in that asset. So this particular ad campaign ran from October fifth to April fifth, twenty twenty-two. It averaged almost five million impressions monthly and it sent more than twenty-one thousand clicks a month to the redwoodskywalk.com website. And in addition to that, there's a video that went with this. It's showing in the local airport. It's been shared with the hotels and some other places as well. But we know that we have about three hundred and thirty thousand plus people who have watched the promotional video and about three hundred and twenty-four thousand of those came through pre-roll videos shown through YouTube videos. So as people are kind of watching videos about the about the Redwood region or about things to do in this area, it's either playing at the beginning, in the middle, or at the end of those videos as an ad. And so those are performing very, very well. I think last time I spoke to you guys, we talked about the ad groups and the segmentation we were doing within the Redwood Skywalk ads as well. So we have some ads that are speaking to kind of peace and tranquility as a theme, some that are leaning into the adventurous spirit of it. Some of them that are speaking into certain age demographics, family friendly or retirees or things like that. Currently, the retiree focused ad groups are the most likely to be clicked. They have the highest click through rate. And the peace and tranquility ads have really driven the most traffic to the website overall. And I thought that was pretty cool. In a moment where I think society needs some more peace and tranquility, that that message is really resonating. And in some of the very early conversations we had had about the Skywalk before it opened with the zoo staff and the foundation, as they were explaining kind of the vision for this new asset that the community was going to have, this idea of peace and tranquility really kept coming through and sort of how are we going to do that? Because Because it's easy to advertise things that get get people excited, and certainly this is an exciting asset. But I think the fact that these ads are really resonating confirms that you have something really unique to offer at a moment where people are really looking for just such a thing, so. In addition to the ad campaigns that we've been running previously and that you just heard about, we introduced a new anchor event advertising campaign that started in June. This secondary ad campaign is used to programmatically promote all of the area events that are coming back and really reinforce the original brand positioning that the city of Eureka is really the economic and cultural center of beautiful Humboldt County. And we want to really continue to increase the economic impact of the tourism program. So we've set aside a bit of the budget so that each month we can pick a couple of events to help amplify. So we have done this with the Fourth of July weekend most recently, we did a little bit with the kite festival. We did quite a bit with the Fourth of July weekend. We had a really unique opportunity where there was a Thursday night concert series, there was a Friday night market, there was a Saturday Earth Alive, and then fireworks on Monday, so it made a great time to visit. And so they, we ran a campaign just speaking to spending the Fourth of July in the city of Eureka. That brought thirteen thousand, I'm sorry, thirteen hundred air out-of-area visitors just to a landing page for the Fourth of July weekend. The only way they could find it is through an ad, so we knew that those visitors were coming specifically from that. And that helps support some record-setting attendance at that event and throughout that weekend, so we're pretty happy about that. We've run some similar programmatic efforts for the Street Art Festival. That one got even more attention. We had about eight thousand out-of-area visitors that went to the itinerary page for that, that was not built on Visit Eureka. And then we then redirected them to to learn more about the program on the Street Art Festival landing page and website itself. And I think that was especially valuable because of the arts and cult, arts and culture aspect pillar of the messaging campaign. So even folks who didn't maybe immediately pack their car and come up, they missed out. But they are starting to associate the city with the arts and culture and opportunities that are here. So those are are the conversion numbers, but the impression numbers are much, much higher. And then the Red Coast Music Festival is coming up and that is also scheduled to receive some supplementary promotion and support. We're pretty excited about that. And I had a chance to meet with the Lodging Alliance and they're pretty excited about what that could do for their attendance numbers and occupancy numbers as well. There are lots of event organizers in the community who are doing lots of really cool things. And so I just want to remind everybody to please go to that website and upload your events so that we know what's going on and we can make really good, strong, informed decisions about which events to promote through this kind of supplemental budget so that we can really get the most bang for the buck and and kind of bring the high-level brand down into really actionable itineraries for people who are looking to visit. And of course, it's a great opportunity for locals to see what's going on as well. So there are a couple realities that we're navigating. So ARPA funds have been distributed across the country to a number of different communities. And in some states, I don't believe California is one of them, but in some states, part of that ARPA package has been split and set aside specifically for tourism. So statewide, a certain percentage of the ARPA funds have to be used for tourism. That's because tourism can be such an economic simulator and coming out of a time where so many small businesses were really hurting. That's a strategic policy decision that has been made. What that means for our reality is that in all of these digital advertising efforts and things where you've got an auction model, there's about to be a lot more competition. Communities that never really invested in tourism are now starting to invest in tourism. And then communities who've always had a big budget have a supplemental budget to do a little bit more. So we just need to kind of be aware of that. It's also increasing the amount of earned media attention. So everybody is trying to tell their town's story in this moment. I think we've got to jump bottom because we've got a really strong brand, we've got a really good targeting strategy, and that has all been defined. But it is a reality that we're gonna have to navigate in the months ahead. We're thinking about that from an advertising, media buying perspective. We're thinking about that in terms of the media relationships that we've developed so far and how are we gonna continue to get more stories placed that are positive and go deeper into the storytelling for this region? But we are also thinking about it in terms of ways we can make our experiences even richer. Eureka has some of the best events and activities that I think any town of this size has. But there's lots of little ones. And I think if there's an opportunity to collaborate and make richer, deeper experiences, so when people come, they get a taste of multiple things instead of just, you know, one thing here and one thing here, that's a way that we can help compete in this new, more competitive tourism environment as well. So those are just some of the things that we're thinking about. I'm sure we'll talk more about them in the months ahead, but hopefully we'll outpace the trends as we've had a habit of doing the last couple of years. I think Eureka is a diamond jewel, as I think Mr. Hollenbeck was saying. And I think we can lean into that pretty confidently. So as we think about FY twenty-two, we're really thinking about Marketing Two Point O. The last couple of years, we've been really building a foundation for this program. We developed the, well, we talked to the community, then we developed a brand, then we started communicating that brand internally during COVID and eventually starting to advertise it. We've launched some new assets. Now we're really focused on sort of doing a gap analysis and figuring out how can we double down on the things that are working, strengthen strengthen the things that maybe are a little bit weaker and just continue to take things to the next level. We saw in our last report that the economic impact is really evident. We're we're getting tremendous lift out of the TOT taxes that are coming in and just good return on investment in terms of the tourism marketing program. So we want to double down on that. We want to make sure that that is continuing to reinvest in quality of life locally and having the kinds of returns that people expect when they invest in such things. So so we're thinking about that. We're thinking about how can we cross promote more of these assets? So if somebody comes in for one thing, how can we make sure we're moving them around more effectively? We're continuing to focus on increasing the length of stay and increasing the amount of money that is spent and left in the community when visitors come to visit. And of course, all of that contributes to a place that is even more beautiful, more accessible, and better to live in for the citizens. So that's all I have for you tonight, but I'm happy to take any questions if that's allowed. Otherwise, thank you very much.
It is indeed. Any may have questions? Councilmember Rio and then Councilmember Castellano, then I have a few things too.
I have a, I have a couple, but I I can go through them. I'll go through a couple and then maybe we'll have more discussion. So you, on that last slide, it did talk, you did talk a little bit about leaning into cross-marketing or cross-promotion and itineraries. And it was, when you were talking about that, I was envisioning that especially some of these ARPA-funded communities, that there might be some opportunities to like work with them to build multi-city itineraries for less-visited places, which might really resonate with some of the travelers that like it here. Was that kind of where where that was going?
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's opportunities both within the community and then within the region as well. I also think there's opportunities with earned media to be telling stories that are maybe not specific to Eureka, but include Eureka in the mix. So for instance, we were talking to Architectural Digest, the magazine, just this past week. They're doing a story of structures in trees and they're featuring a number of different communities. And you better believe Redwood Skywalk's gonna be in there. But that's not a story just about Eureka, but it's a story that's putting Eureka on the map. So it's sort of making room for other people, but also making sure we're showing up more often in more relevant places with bigger audiences. So yes, to itineraries. And I think itineraries locally too. So if we're bringing somebody in as an outdoor recreation enthusiast, that doesn't mean they're not going to enjoy arts and culture or history and architecture while they're in town. So finding ways to cross-promote and share those stories here. But also, there's a lot of towns around here that have great stories to tell. And there's national stories that we can plug into and show that we have just as great a story as anybody else.
Awesome, thank you. And and I guess I'll do one more question and pass the mic. So I think we, I know we've talked about this before, but it keeps popping up for me. So Eureka is not always the most polished gem. We love it, all of us are, I think everyone in this room probably really loves Eureka. And what Eric said really resonated with me around wanting people to see, like locally even, see the the beauty of where we live and and what a gem this place is. But I also want to make sure that when we're telling our story about what there is to experience here, that it's has a, some honesty. And so I know we're using the word authentic. And I do think it's authentic, it's less gentrified here, it's a little gritty. Sometimes you like have to make an intentional effort to to get off the beaten path to find what's really cool. And that does feel like there's a lot of appeal for certain visitors or potential people that might move here to really be able to see and kind of uncover that. And so I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on ways to kind of make that part of our marketing? That there's like something to uncover or something to, like some veil to pull back and then you get to see this like cool thing that not everybody gets to see?
Yeah, it's interesting that you're bringing that up because it's something we've been thinking about and playing with as well. So we recently produced these new maps of of downtown that that highlight, you know, the location in the streets and where some of the major anchor assets are. But in the sidebars, they also have things like don't miss while you're here and have a list of things that that people should go find. And they're purposely not full itinerary narratives that say you should do this and then you should do this and then lunch here. They're really designed to sort of pique people's interest and let them go find them or start conversations in the community to find out, well, which beach should I go to? Or which hiking trail should I explore, that kind of thing? And so we've been thinking about this in in terms of breadcrumbs and sort of leading breadcrumbs. Because for all of Eureka's beauty, there are some things that are a little bit inaccessible. It took a couple trips here before I sort of started to get my bearings on what there was to see and do and how much there was to see and do. So you need to sort of open the door enough that people can see that there are those things to explore. But part of the fun is finding it out and and not having it sort of packaged up to you the way Disney World might handle, hand you an itinerary. And so we're kind of playing with that too. I think there's a lot more work to be done. But I think that is part of the authenticity that we're trying to tell. I also think there's a richer level of storytelling. So over the last couple of years, I've had a chance to, you know, hear the stories of certain buildings or hear what has been in a building over time or hear a ghost story in a restaurant or things like that. And I think those are the things that make somebody who comes to town really excited about a place that they feel like they've discovered, even if somebody else discovered it first. So I I think those are the kinds of things that we're hoping to get to in this next layer of marketing. We're really, I think in the very beginning, we showed you a funnel, right? And we said, we're trying to create awareness and then consideration, preference and selection. We're still kind of finishing up the awareness work and that'll continue, that's kind of set on a schedule now. But now there's this sort of consideration and preference piece that needs to be built out so that we can really strengthen that funnel. And ultimately, hopefully, we're getting to a place where people who come and visit are raving about their experience while they were here. And that's helping fill the funnel so that every dollar you spend goes a little bit further than it would have otherwise. Not to get too theoretical on you.
I I really appreciate that. And and it was funny, as I was saying it, I was thinking, well, I'm a person that won't tell anyone my favorite beach mushroom hunting spot or river spot. So it's like, how dare you ask, you know? So there's a certain amount of protectiveness that I think people have over the like the places that are special and feel tucked away and all that. But um, but I also want, I want people to experience most of them. So I think that'll be a really exciting opportunity to kind of pursue like more of teasing that out and and what that, like how to do that effectively. I know y'all are the experts, but.
We are the experts perhaps in tourism marketing, but you guys are the experts in the place where you live and work. And so I think it's always got to be a collaboration.
Totally, thank you.
It's interesting, I had a conversation the other day with somebody who said, I really love the tourism industry and being involved in it. I just don't want people to come here. She's all, I'm so torn.
Yeah.
So Councilmember Castellano.
Sure. I was, let's see, I was just curious how you define out-of-area. Does that mean like out of Humboldt County or out or like further than twenty miles away? Or how is that defined?
So for the purposes of the out-of-area stats that I showed here tonight, those were outside of Humboldt County. But we had a, we had, for each of those events, we had two campaigns running. One targeted feeder mark, known feeder markets outside of Humboldt County. And then we also ran a campaign specific to Humboldt County. So we want locals within the city and within the county to come to things like Fourth of July and celebrate and participate in the Street Art Festival and everything else that's going on. But we also want to be able to get, take advantage of the economic impact that that true out-of-area net new dollars into the economy can bring. And so we we split the budget and ran it both ways. And so those numbers were specific to outside of Humboldt County. But I can get you the numbers for inside Humboldt County too, if you want to see those traffic numbers for each of them.
Great. And then I was just kind of curious, another question about the cannabis industry. Because, you know, I think we all know that that's an industry that's been having some challenging times and, but also, you know, it has a lot of stories, you know, about people who came here and settled and the back-to-the-land movement. And, you know, we we all have, we have a lot of cannabis businesses in town. Has there been any kind of concerted marketing around that industry, just in terms of trying to, you know, support those folks?
Yeah, so there, there has not been to date a concerted campaign around cannabis. We've done a few things, we've gone to a couple of conferences, we've been talking to media, we've been pitching stories related to the cannabis culture and history here. And we've been forming relationships so that as we get deeper into the campaign and the sort of next phase of of evolution that we can start to tell some of those stories in more authentic ways. But to date, we've been sort of focusing on getting the the foundation in place. And part of that is the relationships to be able to do that and tell those stories with some level of veracity. And and another thing that has come out of that, obviously, there's kind of the agritourism piece of it that people are interested in. There's sort of the can-a-curious piece of it for folks who are not as familiar with the culture around it. But there's also a heck of a lot of innovation that came out of the back-to-the-land movement. And there's ties to things like solar panels and and the innovation that has come out of that and businesses that have come out of this area. And so I think that also deserves some storytelling and some economic development attention. And those are the things that I'm looking forward to kind of digging into next. But I do think it's part of your story. We have been sort of navigating Visit California's attention and comfort level with cannabis marketing as well because that's a big engine that can help us kind of push, amplify the stories and and push them out further than we could do on our own with the resources we have as a small community. But but they are opening up a bit too in terms of their comfort level and and the storytelling they're doing. So I think that's gonna continue to evolve. But if you know of specific stories, cannabis or otherwise, that you think really need to be told, please let us know so that we can get some resources on writing those stories. Dan is on board now and he's got a great journalism background and can help get out there and take photos of folks and get stories written either for the purpose of promoting on our website, the Visit Eureka website, or pushing out to media so that they could hopefully cover them as well.
Great, yeah, I I appreciate that sense of storytelling. I wouldn't, you were talking earlier, I was thinking about, there's this rich history like of the punk scene here in in Eureka. You know, all these people who've been in bands forever and, you know, like kind of well-known musicians that lived here. And I don't know, I I feel like I was at a gathering the past week of many punk people. And it's, you know, it's it's just, I mean, it's kind of remarkable to see how that community has has really, I think, nourished the art scene in Eureka in this kind of like slow and steady way. I don't know, I I just think there's some great stories in in the community to be told around just some of these different kind of alternate, quote, alternative culture people and ideas and, you know, and but but also how that sense of like innovation like really creates like a richness of community.
A hundred percent, yeah, I fully agree with that.
So any other questions? We do have, I mean, it's a report, but I'll take public comment just in case, because there might be people out there who are interested. Is there anybody who would like to ask or to say anything in the public? If not. Okay, I'll bring it back to council then. I had a couple of things I wanted to say. One is, I was just on the phone with Carol, Carolyn Batida's office today at Visit California, and I asked them specifically about cannabis. She's gonna be a keynote speaker at the Redwood Region Conference on September twenty-second, twenty-third, specifically talking about tourism in our region. So that is a reason you should attend. And I did say she might want to mention the Poppy Award that Eureka got, because I thought that would be a pretty cool thing for her to talk about. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I spoke to you and then I couldn't make my Zoom work, but Good Neighbor Week is coming up September twenty-fourth through thirtieth. I saw you were, you had quality of life and placemaking stuff up there. And cities doing some volunteer work. There's some other city programs that are really fun. So I think that it would be nice to at least have like a little social networking campaign highlighting that. And I would love to chat with you more. That was just me reminding myself that I dropped the ball on it. And I'm very excited about the event calendar, I didn't know about that. And I just had somebody in my office the other day saying, somebody should invent that, so I will send her your way.
It is ready and we are excited. We have three or four people every week who spend a couple hours looking for events. So the more people can feed us, the more we can promote and and put our attention there rather than on the hunt internally. So we would love more attention on it.
I'm very excited, I will get it out to this person who will get it out to many people, so. Anybody can, and Councilmember Rio?
I just have a few comments. I was sticking to the, the sort of the questions and comments format. I I guess I'm, these are more thoughts to put a pin in, I think, for later. And I'd love to, if you have insight into these, I'd be really excited to talk about them and talk more with the council about this. I was listening to this program about tourism serving communities like Truckee, for example. I think this is. Serving communities like Truckee, for example. I think this is on NPR BBC today. Um, about how some of their tourism economic development has been hampered by the fact that. People can't afford to live there anymore. Um, and we're not having quite that same level of people being outpriced here um, that they are, but it's still. Um, significant. And um, I know many local restaurants and coffee shops. Um, ha are that are having more limited hours um, due to staffing issues. And I know this is universal. This is everywhere. Um, and it's partly impact impacts of COVID as well, but um, I guess I'm. Worried that. Um, you know, because the great experiences that people could have here when visiting might be hampered by the fact that they can't. Find somewhere to get a bite to eat. Um, I I I think we're, I'm really seeing that and I know that um. You know, I'd like to look at some programs that other folks have done to try to address that. It sounded like in Truckee, they're doing this lease to locals program that's like grant augmented. But anyway, I wonder what your thoughts are on that. Have you kind of heard any feedback about, well, there just like aren't a lot of. Places open that serve my needs?
Yeah, um, not so much on the restaurant front, although when we visited, you know, certainly Mondays are harder to find restaurant options than other days. Um, we did hear a little bit of it when there were um, quite a few flights coming in earlier this spring. Um, on the rental car market that there was not as much. Transportation as was needed to support the number of people that were coming in that way. So. Um, that the market, I think, is evening out a little bit now, but. Um, but those are real concerns, and I think there's. There's ways to address it that the market will address, and then I think there's ways to supplement it, kind of like what you're talking about. And some of that can be. Tap, we can tap into a sense of self-reliance in the community, too, and encourage collaboration, right? For the restaurants that are open on Mondays. They're getting a greater market share, um, a voice and an opportunity to really tell that story and get more people in the door on those days. So certainly the industry needs their days off, just like everybody else. But if we could convince some of our. Business owners to um, help us get through this period by rotating those days or kind of being thoughtful about um, making sure that there's. Open restaurants each day. It's going to support everybody um, in the long run. So like anything else, collaboration means, you know, we've got to start conversations and then people have to be. Willing to collaborate and see the value in it. But um, I think we can be conversation starters in our capacity and. Um, certainly, I know economic development has a number of programs that they're running to help um, support businesses to try and lighten the load during these. Recovery period, during this recovery period. So that's one thing, but we are seeing that nationwide. It's it's a big challenge. And. As you were speaking, I realized I should have shared something in my slide deck that I didn't, but um, Bob Gilbert, our tourism practice lead, has just started a new podcast. He started it back in June. Um, and he's interviewing a number of folks, people like Carolyn Batida and people from Brand USA and just sort of tourism experts from around. Um, the country on their sort of recovery efforts and what they're doing in unique communities. One of the episodes, um, I'm not sure if it's been released yet or it's about to be released. But was with a community that got overrun with um, campers during um, during COVID and and they were sort of trying to figure out how to deal with that. So there's some good stories and lessons learned. Um, in that podcast. So if anybody's interested. In this industry, it might be a little nerdy for those who don't love tourism marketing as much as as we do, but. Um, there is a really good uh free resource in that. It's called Tourism Heads and Their Tales, and it's available on our website. It's also available on. All the different podcast apps um, for download. So if anybody's interested in learning more about it, um, there's some great stories and learnings in that.
Cool. Thank you. I have one more um, comment string. So I I wanted to kind of back the idea of some marketing around, um, you know, the refined yet relaxed cannabis tourism that people can have here. Um. Um, it it does seem like there there are two um, lounges that in Eureka and that's um, not still that, not that common. So um, and they both seem really. Really classy. So that's cool. Um, I also, um, you know, it's interesting thinking about like events, because some of the things that are cool are not. Um, fully happening again yet still. Um, but since you mentioned the sports marketing background, I just want to say. Humboldt Roller Derby is a really cool story. Um, and we're not really actively bouting right now, but um. Love to talk more about telling that story because it's a really cool, we're like a longstanding league in the roller derby world. Um, and then, you know, just thinking about like the Humboldt crabs and rowing and. Things that people can experience if they're staying in Eureka but are just a stone's throw away. I I'm sure we're already marketing that too, but there's like some. Really cool stories behind both of those leagues. Um, and then also backing that idea of um, the all the. All the Gen X and millennial and maybe older punks are now adults and have money and are very sentimental. So it seems like um, there really is some there there um, with the kind of counterculture scene here. Um, and then lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't say when you mentioned the um, car rental issue. Um, I'm the board chair of Humboldt Transit Authority, and we're really trying to um, make it easier and more effective for people to ride transit. Um, soon we're going to have tap on top, top off card readers, um, so people don't have to deal with ticketing and figuring that out and. Um, just really working on letting people know to like at the airport that they can take transit into town and. Um, might be able to skip some of the woes of car rental. So um, as we're kind of proceeding through that, I'd love to. Connect more to share that story because we're, we're not always great at marketing transit. We're really good at the operations.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's awesome. I had an opportunity to work um, with another large city on a um, cross. Uh, cross transit project where the same card got you a bike rental or a car rental or a um, bus pass. And there were just some interesting learnings that came out of that. So. Um, would love to nerd out on that at some point, if you want to chat about it.
I I would also love that. And oh, just one more thing. Um, the equity piece of gatekeeping, I was thinking about that when I was like, I don't ever want to tell anyone my favorite swimming hole. Um, that was a, something that was specifically identified as a problem for Cal Poly Humboldt and students coming from out of the area. And as I, after I said it, I was like, oh, I sound like a real jerk. But it's a real problem here, um. Where the things to do that are cool are so closely guarded that people won't share them. And um, particularly students and um, students without cars and people of color often feel excluded from those things. So I was just thinking about how. I do hope that we share those things more overtly and specifically with the student community. Um, because I still think, and I still teach a class at Cal Poly Humboldt, and my students are so frequently like. I just don't know, I don't know about Eureka. Like, Eureka's there, Target's there. In-N-Out Burger's there, but I don't really know about Eureka. And so I'm always like on this mission to tell them, and they're probably so sick of it, but my students are always told about Eureka. But um, but that seems like a ripe opportunity for growth.
Yeah. And I think one of the opportunities to to go back to the storytelling idea is that. Um, rather than running an ad that says, here's the grove where you should go find the best mushrooms. Um, that we're writing stories about the the mushroom hunting tradition and what that's about and why people do it. And that there's all these places and these are the kinds of conditions you look for. And you're sort of invite inviting people into. A culture that already exists rather than inviting an exploitation of a place that has something special to offer. And so. That's kind of the next level, right? There's advertising to get people to pay attention to the region, but then there's sort of a. A richer storytelling that can happen. That's that's a deeper narrative and sort of gives you the opportunity to share an ethos as you're sharing an experience rather than just. Sort of swinging open the doors and saying, come into my favorite place. It's tricky, but it's the goal.
All right, anybody else?
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity. And I know a few of you are transitioning off, so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you. I've really. Um, been blessed to work on this account. I really enjoyed every minute of it.
I think we're all still going to be around, though.
Good, good. I'm counting on it. All right. Thank you guys so much. Bye bye.
Um, now we are moving on to future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they want to make sure we discuss in the near future? You don't have to think of something. It's not already on the top of your head. I'm saying you. Um, all right, then we will move on to city manager reports and um.
So, yeah, I'll just start. The main report's going to be from Chief Robertson about some of the. Services provided by HBF and how they're being affected by staffing issues. But I wanted to mention a few things. One of them came up as it relates to cannabis. Um, staff is working with local cannabis businesses as well as um, members of the Humboldt County Growers Association on a cannabis festival here. And. I believe that's maybe the second time that Jennifer's heard about that, but we'll be making sure that that is pubbed as much as possible and uh. Tell the stories that council is uh, talking about. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to. Tag on to what Mayor Seaman was talking about with the Dolo. Some really want to thank um. Leroy Zerlane, Captain Salty himself, for coordinating all those things with the encouragement of Councilmember Royo and and and. Councilmember Moulton Support and Councilmember Gergel's support as well. Um, the um. Businesses, North Coast Fabricators, Kernan, and also I need to add to that list, which would be. Um, New Life Services has called me today and have offered up volunteer labor to clean the Dolo. And so. They will be out in the next few days to power wash and clean the Dolo. Within the guidelines, Director Gerving of all of our stormwater requirements, I can assure you. And then finally, um, I'd like to announce that I had a discussion with Director Gerving this um, weekend and. We're talking about the amount of um, engines that we saw here from Cal Fire and. Um, reached out to Chief Robertson to um, offer up um, free passes to the zoo for. The firefighters that are here when they're off. And so I met up with. Battalion Chief, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name, and um, gave them the information. And so we're offering that to the local um. Uh, ELC here at Redwood Acres for the folks that are from out of the area to be able to visit the zoo in their off time. And so with that, um, Chief Robertson would. Like to talk about some of the um, services and their stations and how the effects of staffing will affect it.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as uh, City Manager Slater said, I'm here to just talk, uh, provide a brief update on our staffing situation currently. And also provide an opportunity for any questions. So we're facing a pretty significant shortage uh, right now. We have 10 vacant positions. Um, and with that, it's uh, required us to go to a four-station model away from our regular five-station deployment. Uh, but it's a temporary thing until October 1st. We're just unable to fill on a consistent basis, um, enough of our promoted positions to be able to maintain our five-station deployment. And there's two big reasons for this. One is we've had significant long-term workers' comp injuries uh, from. Two to uh, two months to a year. Um, but we're hoping that those will be resolved uh, by October 1st. And then we had five uh, of our personnel leave for other agencies last year, excuse me, last week. Um, the most notably are three captains and one battalion chief went to Arcata Fire. And so we're facing a pretty significant uh, um, an unprecedented situation. Uh, that said, uh, we've been working together as an organization to to deal with this and not just uh, in a reactive way. That's happened in the last week. We've been actively developing our personnel to step up into promoted positions through our acting positions. Uh, we're recruiting firefighters and we'll be doing interviews uh, for potentially for uh, positions next week. We're also, for the first time ever, having an open test for engineer, captain. Uh, and uh, battalion chief. And that'll be ending at the end of the month as well. So we're hoping uh, between those two things of developing more personnel. Who are already stepping up into these leadership roles and uh, just I'm really impressed with their optimism and positivity through this challenging time. Um, but we're hoping by October 1st, our workers' comp folks will be back. And we'll have those positions filled and return back to our five-station deployment. So this is a really challenging time. Uh, like I said, unprecedented. Um, but I I'm confident we will be able to overcome it. And I wanted to thank you for your support, including staff that's been really great. And uh, ask what questions you have for me.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief? Councilmember Royo?
Is there anything you feel the city can do to support you or to help with the messaging around this? Uh, I mean. Is there, is this something that you need more? Um, yeah, more support to explain to the community or anything like that?
Well, I think we're just uh, across the board, so to speak, in an unprecedented time with labor shortages. Um, part of the reason, uh, you know, five people have left and potentially another one to two are leaving in the next two months is. Agencies across the state are hiring and uh, they all pay uh, very well compared to us. Um, and that's not a unique situation for Humboldt Bay Fire. So just the support in developing the area. Um, and then supporting staff is is what we can ask for and looking forward and continuing to make. This a great place to work and make it competitive. Um, because the people who who do live here and work here are really committed to to being here and they love, they want to raise their families here. So thank you for asking that.
And and we have, you know, forwarded on some of the benefits that we offered our employees to Humboldt Bay Fire, um, the zoo memberships. Um, the Adorni memberships for the family. And we're working on some other programs that we'll be discussing with the chief to try and help out as well.
Councilmember Royo?
Do you think there's the perception that um, because in the past, when there are brown out of stations, it was um. More specifically funding related? Do you think there's that perception in the community that this is also? A funding related change? Or do you think it's clear that this is about? Um, staff availability, I guess?
I I don't, I haven't gotten clear enough feedback from the community to really answer that question. Um, we've seen a very small couple of things. Um, some of the crews have just uh, been told they have a lot of staffing because in an effort to um. Maximize our effectiveness, uh, we are able, we're putting more people on each uh, apparatus. Um, so that we can provide more working groups on a significant incident. And also if somebody does get injured or go homesick, we can, we can compensate for that. Um, but we haven't uh, gotten a lot of feedback from the community. Um, it's not a funding issue per se. It's just the situation that that we're in.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief. Final thoughts?
Uh, that's about it. Looking forward to the uh, council reports. And I want to talk about punk rockers too, because I was around back in the eighties when that was happening, so.
I, it would be pretty funny to have an uh, like a yearbook of all the old punk rockers. I think we'd be like, oh, yeah, I know that guy.
I think we could get Wilson to show up to that.
He's who I was thinking.
He would a hundred percent show up. Yeah, recent punk shows showed, uh, we're all, we're all old and we're all still there, uh, coming to the shows just with earplugs, so.
So we will um, do it in backward word order and uh, start with Councilmember Gergel.
Okay, so um, I didn't really have a lot to report. I did a lot of stuff. That I really enjoyed. I just love being here. Um, so I guess what I would say is the Humboldt Bay Marathon happened last weekend. It was a great success. We had a runner who ran um, 234 for the marathon. That is so fast, you guys, so fast. It's pretty amazing. He was a machine. There were about 200 people that came. From local, all over the area. I talked to people from Virginia, all over the place. My quads are still sore because you should train for those types of things, but. Take one for the city, right? It's all good. It's all good. Um, and then I just wanted to give a shout out to Tommy, um. Tomcat, he's a, he's a local DJ and he, this is his seventh year of walking the full marathon. He walked the full marathon, uh, 26.2 miles. And I have to tell you that it's the point two that kills you. If you've ever run one, you'll know that. Um, so it was just a great thing for him to be able to accomplish that. I walked partly with him and he was just so blistered up. And I guess. It just shows me, you know, the resilience and dedication of people who have a desire to do something and to complete it. So that gave me an inspiration. Um, which I, which I like. And uh, tomorrow I get to go out with Humboldt Bay Fire on a ride along, so I'm super excited about that. And then uh, school starts on Monday, so. You know, back to work. But I've enjoyed my summer off in our city and enjoying my community.
Wow, summer vacation was fast and I don't even get to enjoy it. Councilmember Royo?
Great. Um, well, in no particular order, um, some recent things. I mean, it's been great to see all the events come back online. Um, Friday Night Markets have been. Just thriving. People are out in droves, appreciating the event and su- supporting local businesses and supporting local farmers. Um. Big shout out to EPD for always. Big shout out to EPD for always staffing all those events and just making sure that folks are being safe and doing some light crowd control and just being a friendly face too. I know a lot of people stop and chat and it always seems like that's going really well. So thank you. The Street Art Festival, same note there for EPD, but it was a wonderful festival. And I was reminded during public comment earlier that maybe there's some misperceptions about the festival and that is entirely funded by donations and driven by volunteers. And so the city does support it, but there's so much volunteer fundraising and effort that goes into that. And it's incredible to see it continuing to go. And I would like to find a way to publicly recognize the organizers some more, so maybe we can work on that together. They've been at it for years and keep saying, oh, this is, you know, maybe I'll pass the torch, but then, then don't. So I think since they're still holding that torch, I'd love to do some recognition there. Congressman Huffman came to visit Humboldt Transit Authority, as well as our Elk River Restoration Site. And so got to have some great FaceTime, showing some of the great projects that are going on and grant funding and operations that we have in the city and with Humboldt Transit. I'm participating with the Core Hub meetings, and I cannot remember what the acronym is right this minute. It has to do with offshore wind energy. And there will be somewhat tangentially related to that. I'm helping to organize an event that'll be on September 29th that is going to invite people to help give input about what kinds of data they would like to see to help give input about offshore wind. So that sounds really wonky, but it's actually really cool because it has to do with pulling together all the data about marine mammal migration and bird migration and fisheries and tribal resources and all the things that are going to be important decision-making points around offshore wind in the future and being able to like experience that data and then figure out how to package it so that other people can use it. So I'll share more about that with y'all when I have that information. It's not a city thing per se, but it's a community thing and it's really important as we have that big opportunity coming our way. We've been planning for a City of Eureka participatory budgeting process and that's been going really well. And I want to just really thank our staff for powering forward with that. And our consultants, Mary Jalinas and Roger James, who are working with us to design a really good process for getting people's input to decide about a portion of the city's budget. We have a Eureka Chamber of Commerce mixer on, that's a city chamber mixer on Thursday at 5:30 at the Clark Museum. Is that still true? Yes. Okay. So city and chamber making connections there, continuing to make connections. And then I also just wanted to note that California Coastal Cleanup Month is the whole month of September. And there's going to be all manner of events to do coastal cleanup in September. So check out the North Coast Environmental Center's website. They're the coordinators of that. And there's always tons of different groups that participate. And so there's a way to plug in on a date that works for you, because it used to be one day and, or one weekend. And now it's the whole month of September. So I thought that is a good thing. September is always a busy month, so it's like you gotta find a time that works. And I will end it there.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. The biggest thing I've done recently was not city business, but it was a service to the community thing, which is I spent two weeks at the North Star Quest Camp, which is an empowering camp for middle schoolers. And I just wanted to brag that we never turn a camper away because they can't pay. And our community has rallied behind us to make that possible. So everybody that asks to go to camp gets to go to a summer camp and swim in the river and take workshops. And also that we did two back-to-back camps for nearly a hundred people and had no cases of COVID during the, one of the biggest surges recently. And I'm really proud that my staff was able to pull that off. So once I get over my post-event depression, I'm looking forward to school starting on Monday. I have a little student in my house and I just want to ask everybody to look out. School's happening and there's going to be kids out and about early in the morning when maybe you haven't had your coffee yet. So watch out around those schools and around the safe routes to schools or people be walking and biking. I'm looking forward to the League of California Cities coming up. This will be the first one I've been able to attend in person and so that should be interesting. And then I'm also looking forward to Pastels on the Plaza, which of course is an event in Arcata, but it benefits North Coast Children's Services, which benefit all the kids in our community. So that's going to be fun.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano.
All right. Let's see. Yeah, well, I just want to acknowledge my fellow council members. I really appreciate all the things you do in the community. It's awesome getting to serve alongside you through our similarities and differences. And yeah, I just appreciate city staff and it's a great experience being here. And with that, I have been busy, like we all are, I guess. Let's see. And yeah, and thanks to city staff for the work they've been doing around the waterfront specific plan. I got to attend one of the meetings along with members of the Cultural District a couple of weeks ago. Also working on the participatory budgeting. And I collaborated with the Ink People and NCRT to put on a parade of dreams. So this past weekend, that was really fun, livening up the streets. And yeah, similarly, I was thinking about, you know, attending the Eureka Street Art Festival and thinking about the folks who've been holding that down for so many years. And like, it's really inspiring to look out and see that three people can motivate the community to make such an impact over, you know, four years. Like, thank you. And, and just how, how far positive thinking and action behind it go. Also went to the Elk River site. I will be out of town next week for a few days, going to the California Stewardship meeting. And then two weeks after that, going to the Cal Cities meeting. And I wanted to say, the Centro del Pueblo Harding, since Uario was vandalized again two nights ago. And just want to acknowledge that, you know, though that didn't happen in Eureka, it happened in a community near Eureka and many of the people who use that garden live in Eureka. And, you know, just as a community, we still have a lot of work to do to really make sure that people who are more recent immigrants feel welcome. And, you know, BIPOC peoples feel welcome and appreciate that we've done work towards that. But it's really sad when, you know, we see vandalism against those communities take place. So I've just been thinking about, in my own life, you know, how I can show up better and then what we can do as a community. So that's on my mind. When we got to the things for the agenda, it's like, I don't know if I have a thing for the agenda, you know, but it's definitely on my mind. So maybe it will just be something, you know, we'll think about and bring forward later.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to tell the story one more time. I was on the Economic Development Commission when Michelle said, we should have a mural festival. It was just an idea. It's been just a blast watching them. And how she has gone through it and had a baby and she's still doing it. She's got to be, it's amazing. They're wonderful. And so I support all y'all and, and giving them the highest praise. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.